Chairman's running a bit late. There we go. Chairman's running a bit late, yep, so we can go ahead and get started. Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. We have, the main thing on the agenda today is another process, or another step in our strategic agenda process, and Misty and her team are here to take us through that. And then, after they're through, I've just a couple of short cleanup items with you to talk about what we're gonna do with the July 3rd B.O.C.C. meeting. And then, Tim would like to talk about some new, we had a governor veto yesterday that's going to impact com care funding, so we will, while you're all here, would like to talk about that with you as well. So, but without further ado, Misty, if you could go.
Thank you, welcome. For having us here today. Misty, where I come from, I'm from Central County, which is a state, and Shana, guardian of the state. We are really giving an update on your work being done on the strategic plan and get your feedback on some specific items that we need to hear from you on, and then kind of walk you, walk you through the goals areas of that work. So, for our agenda today, we're gonna talk about the work teams, the employee engagement that's been done, mission, vision, and values is really where we're gonna spend the most of our time, and then a little bit just on some of the goal areas and kind of where we're at with this process.
It's just like a regular mouse.
Okay. I think I broke it.
You're trying to use the other clicker thing, the other side.
Help me, Kate. Okay. So, just to recall where we were left off on the work teams, we have five work teams that are working in specific areas, public safety, public works, human services, general government, and elected and appointed. There's anywhere from fifteen to thirty people involved in any of these work teams, so a good deal of your leadership has been involved in helping shape this. That must have been an accident the last. Everybody's feeling confident. Okay. So, just a little bit of update on the employee engagement. One of the things we were asked to do was to make sure that all voices had an opportunity to participate. We did a do-it-yourself type of facilitation project and asked leadership within your organization to go back and ask key questions on where the organization was going, what was most important in the work they do, what are the big issues they see coming, and really impressed with, there was a hundred and twelve of these facilitated work sessions that was held throughout your organization to engage employees. Over nine hundred and fifty employees participated in this and had an opportunity to share where they thought the organization was and where they really see it needs to be going, and also to identify issues with that. We were overwhelmed with this type of response. There's almost a hundred pages of notes that was generated from this, and so it's taking us a bit to go through all of those and to make sure that we are framing that up correctly. So, the next time we come back, we'll have a full report for you on that, but did want to share that that has happened, and really wanted to thank all of the employees and the leadership team who made that possible for them. All right. The next, on the mission, vision, and values, if you recall, at our last time we met, we kinda gave you the update on the process of what we were doing. We really wanted people to think about this issue when we are at our best. And we talked about things about like the interest arena, or employee engagement, when there are major impacts of disasters and how people come together to address that, or very inspiring cultural things like the elephants exhibit at the zoo. What's going on in those situations that put us at our best? So, we started generating ideas, and then, what does that mean for our mission, what does that mean for our vision, and what does it mean for our values? So, before you today are some draft mission statements, draft vision statements, and draft values. And so, we are gonna put you, ask for your input on all of these to kinda talk about what you like, what you don't like, how we might work this together. So, if you will go with me onto page three of your handout. I apologize that the vision on the paper's a little hard to read, but these were the notes we gave you the last time on mission. These were the feedback we received from your employees, and then incorporated some of the feedback we had from all of you. We took that and with the help of Van and the communications team helped draft three type of visions, or mission statements, and would like for your review and input on what you like or what you don't like. So, top of page four actually gives those versions of some options for a mission statement. So, my question back to you is, are there one of those that you like? If so, which one? Are there parts of it that stand out to you that you really wanna make sure we keep, or we can mix and match these a little bit, too?
I like number two. It's the only one that talks about health.
Okay. So, health is one of those words. If you like another version, we can include health and, you know, any of those. That's important.
But I like the partnerships in number one.
First time we've seen these, so.
We're giving you a little pause here to think about this.
Can you take feedback from anybody else? Take a poll? Oh, you did? Was there a consensus?
I think what's important right now is that you guys talk about pick critical words, and if you hate any of these, tell us you hate them. I mean, if you get us down to one or two, then we keep them as a part of our strategy. And if you hate them, is there a reason why you hate them? Words you hate.
Hate's a hard word.
Or on the positive side, words you really like, yeah.
We like some, plus some others.
I guess I lean a little bit towards one. But I, now, I can, I think the word that I questioned in two and three is passionate before employees. Sounds a little dramatic to me.
Yeah, and I agree. I think the word enriching's a little hyperbolic.
I think we're missing the word inspire.
Really?
You know, you throw that out there.
How about empower?
Hey.
Hey, that's your word.
Yeah. Kinda like a better future for all in number one.
Yeah.
I like that.
Yeah, one has. Well, 'cause protecting, and whatever, you're asking for a substitute word for enriching?
Well, yeah. Yeah, enriching, like.
But protecting sure covers public, public safety.
Yeah, I like the word protecting.
Yeah.
Maybe promoting and protecting, or something like that.
Protecting and promoting lives.
Well, something along that line. I don't get paid, you know, that big money like Misty does to come up with the right nomenclature.
We'll be glad to help out with some options.
Jim?
I'm still in the thinking room. I'd like to see the old mission statement, see how it compares.
Okay.
Is that anywhere on this, or anything?
It's on a wall somewhere. Kate, you can go take it off a wall somewhere.
Or I can just.
SedgwickCounty.org.
She knows it, she knows it by heart, Kate.
It's on the screen now.
So, what I'm hearing is that we want the word protecting in there, but we'd also like the word health in there, in whatever version of this. To, a better future for all, is that language that you like?
What I like about the original, one is that we want to empower people, that's the word it sounds like somebody here likes, but empower people to, to have the freedom and opportunity to pursue those values, but we're not gonna be able to hand them the values. I mean, it's not our responsibility to make them prosperous or to make them healthy. We can make that possible, you know, make sure that we have the services available in the community, but there's a personal responsibility aspect of our citizens. And so, our job is to create the conduits where they can do it, but at some point, it becomes their responsibility as well. So, I think there's a difference from the one that was up on the screen versus these. These that sound like we're, like it's our responsibility to enrich people, and every single citizen will be enriched by what we do. I'm not sure we can do that.
Okay.
Can you just describe the difference between the mission and the vision?
The vision is what you do, right? What, what, and if you were asked by someone who really wasn't familiar with county government, what is it that you do? What are you, what are you accomplishing on a day-to-day? The vision is really the idea of what's that inspiration? What are, where are you going with this, the organization? And if you think about it from a, if you were recruiting somebody in to be a part of your organization, what would you tell them they get to do? What, what is it that they will get to accomplish that you're striving for? It's more aspirational, and vision is more, this is our day-to-day work, what we're striving for.
So, in these meetings, did we ask, you know, our employees to describe what we do? And what were their top three things that they said?
So, that's really the information on the mission statement before. This is when we were talking about when you're at our best, what that work is going on. They talked about connecting and collaborating, ensuring safe and healthy communities, improving quality of life, removing the barriers, using resources responsibly, solving problems through innovation, and creating that kind of sense of community pride. Those are a combination of a lot of the work. Those are the ones that came out the most for that.
Well, tagging along with what Commissioner Howe was saying somehow. Just throwing, providing an atmosphere or environment for citizens to achieve whatever opportunities that they want, that's kinda what you're saying.
Well, again, let me read it again, so everyone can pursue freedom and prosperity in a safe, secure, and healthy environment. There's a word healthy. We create the opportunities for them to be safe and secure, and have prosperity as a exercise of our freedom and responsibility in our community. To me, it is inclusive, and we're trying to help everyone with these services. We outline the fact that we have, we're a partner with them, or we're giving them the things they need to pursue those, pursue prosperity through freedom, and a safe, secure, and healthy environment. I think it has the elements I like. I don't know what's wrong with that. I guess we're taking something away that I think is pretty good with something I'm not so sure I like as much, so that's my problem. I like the old one a little bit better. Pardon?
Freedom. I mean, aren't we all free? Why do we have to tell people that they can pursue freedom? I mean, that to me seems a little grandiose, like.
Well, I think saying that for everyone to pursue, is that what it says? Everyone can pursue?
So, everyone can pursue freedom.
I mean, that just sounds kinda clunky in a, in a mission statement, or a mission statement's supposed to be, you know, from everything I've seen with mission statements, pretty concise and uplifting and like, just seems like everyone can pursue. It's like, what are we delivering? What are we, you know? Well, it's our existence. I agree, other parts for the good, but so everyone can pursue, I think is just clunky.
I can do some quick editing, you know, they got the word pursue and say empower, that'd be a nice change perhaps.
But it's more like to empower, instead of so that everyone can empower, or so everyone can do this. I think it's, let's be more direct.
You're kinda saying, when you use the word freedom, they have, they're free to do this.
That's correct.
Freedom sounds a little bit constitutional. That's, that's why.
The problem is, we, we sometimes have the best of intentions, but we create regulations and rules and limitations on what they can do. We're trying to allow them to have the responsibility and the freedom to empower them, you know, to empower them to have prosperity and a safe, well, I think the main part of this is, we're providing quality public services so that everyone in our community can pursue the things they desire freely, and it's their responsibility to do so.
Yeah, that's.
In a safe, secure, and healthy environment. Our part is a safe, secure, and healthy environment. That's what we do. We're providing quality services and to create a safe, secure, and healthy environment so people are free to, essentially to have the best life possible.
So, thanks, Kate. I think I'm consistently hearing is the language of empower, some type of creating the environment or empowering people to, to do that, to have that opportunity available, safe and secure, some language of that in there, something unhealthy as a part of that, and then, something that has a focus of for the future, whether that's best, best life, but something that is future, creating those opportunities for the future there.
And with safe and secure, I do like, I do like the word protect, too, so, if you can keep that in there.
Yeah, I think one of those, right, too. Other parts of this that, we talked about being not the language of passionate and not the language of enriching was a little, little much.
I think the word innovation, though, I mean, we really should start thinking about different ways to do things, and that means we should be innovative. I mean, when we look at the future of our organization, you know, we're moving into 2020 now, whoever thought we would be here, and to do the same thing and expect different results.
And I guess from the, from the three, another key part to point out earlier was partnerships, and maybe, maybe that's combines us.
No.
Innovative partnerships, or innovation partnerships, whatever.
But that concept is different than any of those others, something that's important. We have something that reflects that. So, going back to, again, so something that focuses on empowering or creating the environment for those, for folks to lead their best lives, something on safety, something on health, focused on creating opportunities, that could go back to empowerment or environment, innovation and partnership is what I think I'm hearing from all of you. Is there any other parts that we're missing on mission? Commissioner Howe, anything else from the other one that you, trying to create, get the concepts in there that you were talking about?
Well, the other one mentions the, what we actually, I think this is the most important part of the original statement, is the mission of our county, of our policymaking and of our budgeting and of our tax collection and of things, is to provide quality public services. Where the old, the old one said, is to provide quality public services to our community. That's a great thing, 'cause it, it kind of brings in the idea that we have, you know, tremendous employees, we have, we're proud of what we do. I know this is a, I have just one other thought. I know this is an old, I went to school a long time ago, and I remember a long debate about the word healthy. The word healthy can apply to people, but it can't really apply the word healthy to a community or to a, to an environment, because they're not alive. It can have a healthful environment, or health, healthful, you know, community, but organisms and, you know, people can be healthy, and so I don't know if I like the word healthy as, in just generally, I don't even know how it's used in the sentence, but I would be cautious with that word.
I have to disagree with you, 'cause I think that we can have a healthy community.
Well.
I, respectfully, I'd have to disagree with that statement, because I think, you know, when people are doing well, when people are happy, I mean, you can have a healthy community. I guess I'm not making my argument, but I just will respectfully disagree with that statement.
I think one of the challenges always in doing this is trying to get it, Mr. Donald was saying, in a short enough version that people actually mean something to them, instead of, mission statement should be paragraphs, now we're trying to get it down to the ten words.
I think about like a political slogan.
Yep. Kind of a, kind of a shorter, a little bit longer version of that, yep.
I guess the reason I say it is, I don't want someone to use the grammar not to criticize our mission statement that we couldn't print. I want that to be something that everyone would say was well-written.
Yep.
That's all.
All right. So, we're, we are, in, in any of this planning, it's a funnel process, right? So, hopefully, we have narrowed it down just a little bit in this effort here. Any other feedback on the mission statement? Anything else we?
Well, the chairman's digesting it right off the bat, and he might have an opinion or two, but. You're gonna have to pull that mic, 'cause I'm in the curve right now.
You'll get in on the front of the next, the next kind of topic here. All right, so we will keep working on this and probably come back with just a couple of versions and then a few and talk about that.
That makes sense. Thanks.
Moving on to vision, Shana's gonna.
So, we went through the same process with vision, and some of the key things that came from staff and the leadership team was innovative leaders trusted by the community, provide excellence in service from a vibrant community that's poised and is broadly competitive with opportunity. And so, from that information, these are the three options that we have drafted in regards to the vision statements. And again, this is what do you, what does Sedgwick County aspire to be? Where do you see Sedgwick County in the future, and where are we heading? And so, if you wanna take some time to kinda look at those three options, and we'll go through the same process that we just approved with the mission statement to identify the best future, or language that we want to include.
Well, we all definitely like that word empower in number three. I, I think some of the.
How does it?
Some of the language is kinda, goes back to the enriching and, and some of the, you know, you know, the passionate word and stuff, a little much, probably, like extraordinary governance. Sounds like North Korea.
Well, that's, I had extraordinary already lined out thinking, more like responsible governance. Three almost sounds more like a mission statement, doesn't it, huh? Isn't that what we've just been talking about? I kinda like number one in a way. If you took extraordinary out, creates this opportunity for everybody to succeed. Again, it takes out the, number three, the healthy, safe, and all that stuff. We've talked about that in the mission statement, is that right? Is it okay to be repetitive, or do you say one, one way, and then take the mission or the vision and say, we want you to be the best you can be?
So, usually, you want a difference between them, so I, I think three does read more like a mission statement, and kind of where you guys wanna hit that sweet spot of what is inspiring versus practical.
I'm sorry, Misty, what'd you say I was?
No.
I was not looking against you.
This is, this is the detail word. Three really could be your mission statement. It's really, we're trying to give you kind of levels of what loftiness you wanna aim, aim at here. So, extraordinary might be too, too far, the example. Three could, could be more of a mission statement, I agree.
Shana's with County's vision statement is, we choose to be a different kind of government, one that inspires trust for who we, who we are and pride in what we do, one that dares to imagine what we can be and strives each day to make a difference, one that cares about the health, the character, and the promise of the community. Through our service, Dawson County will always be an extraordinary place, second to none, where people want to be, to work, to live.
Sounds like Tony Robbins.
It's a mouthful.
What we thought we heard from you all was that you wanted a shorter version of those that they, when we did, when we did the interviews with you and.
I just throw it out.
Yeah. But we can, this is, when it starts to become real on paper, that's when you, you get to have that. Are we heading in the right direction or not?
Is there anything missing from the aspirations? Do you feel like, is there anything missing from this idea of what can I sell people on in relationship to the work I'm in?
Well, my only concern on like number one is it talks more about governance rather than what our actual, what our, it's our people, not the governance.
Okay.
It's our staff that does the work. We're not, we, we kinda set the tone for it, but I think if focusing too much on the leadership rather than on the folks that are actually doing the job that we care about most.
Chairman, is this, the service, language of service versus governance, does that make more sense in here?
Yes, somehow we need to focus on this, on the staff.
How about if you added, after governance, added something like, in the delivery of services? So, you have governance and services. Somehow combining. I think, I think responsible governance is kind of important, but, but Chairman does point out, we do deliver.
Yeah, I think deliver instead of creates is probably better, 'cause we really don't create anything. We're, we're not a manufacturing entity.
Innovative services.
Right, well, innovative services, but, but we do, we are about serving the community and enabling and assisting and collaborating in any of those adjectives to put with services.
These statements.
I like.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. No, go ahead.
These statements as written, to me, seem a little lofty and a little disconnected to the reality of Sedgwick County. I mean, I'm not sure exactly what it, how we implement what it says, type of thing. The old statement says, Sedgwick County strives to be a value-driven, regional leader seeking innovative opportunities and collaborative partnerships to deliver quality public services. Again, I don't like everything about that, but it does bring in some elements I do like. And so, what I think this one's missing, it doesn't seem to have any, any, any substance. I don't know what it means in terms of how do I apply it to what we do every day.
What are the, what pieces do you like?
Well, I like, you know, to pull out some words, collaborative partnerships is a tremendous phrase. That we're a regional leader seeking innovative opportunities. Wow, that's, that's powerful. And our purpose, once again, is to deliver quality public services. Those three elements are in this, in the old statement. I like all three of those. I'm not sure they completely fit together. I'm not sure that those would belong in the same sentence if I would've written it, but I do like the fact that those are very meaningful statements. I know what those mean.
Have we fulfilled that, that vision of being a regional leader? I mean, when was it written?
About three years ago.
Have we fulfilled that?
I think we've been, like, we strive to, we strive to meet that. I'm not sure that you'll ever say you've arrived, so the intent of the vision is to say, it defines a point on the horizon for us to, to go towards. I don't think you're ever gonna get to the end of the rainbow, it's gonna, it's gonna continue to be ahead of you, so have we moved in that direction? Absolutely. Have we, have we gone past the end point? No. And it's, I don't think it's. And, and it's, I don't think it's intended to make that. To be something you say I've achieved this exactly, and there's nothing else to achieve. That's not, that's not the point of a vision statement.
Thank you for your explanation. I appreciate that. I do like the one, um, in Johnson County that they inspired trust. Not just because it has the word inspire in it, but because, you know, I think people want to have assists, that they can trust their government, that they're being good stewards of their tax dollars, that they're spending things appropriately. You know, I feel like that's what we do. We spend money. Should do it and then.
Yeah, I think that goes back to Pete's initial word of responsible. And, and I think that's what people want in government. They want efficient government. They want responsible government. They want responsive government. They want, um, you know, competent government.
Even before Commissioner Howell read the, the last vision statement, uh, the word partner somehow, I think is important. We have to be, uh, responsible partners to all the other different organizations that we work with every single day, whether it be the city of Wichita or GWP or business community. We have to be responsible partners too.
Right. And I think that's where like the word assist or promote comes in. Because we on our own can't really do anything outside of providing public service if it wasn't for our partnerships.
Not to be responsible to death, but as I'm listening, you know, the opposite of responsible is irresponsible. And when you hear that from the public, that just irresponsible governments, irresponsible potholes, whatever it is. That's really as an elected, that, that's what, that's where you're going, you know, you just can't be irresponsible. And so it elevates responsible to a more responsible response.
What about the language of inspire trust? Does that, because you brought that up, does that resonate with the rest of you?
Trust.
And then it, so.
Healthy, not healthy. The opposite of healthy is unhealthy.
Those are the words we don't want to use, right? Yes. The language we have up here highlighted as responsible, inspiring trust, something on the idea of, um, creating that environment, right? So whether that is through assisting or enabling, collaborating, something that's about the environment that you're seeking and then the partnership part of this.
Right.
Other feedback. This is the sausage-making part of, of, of the work that you are doing here.
We talked about partnerships though in the mission.
Yeah. Where, where do you guys, is that your day-to-day work that you need, which is kind of the mission part of the work, or is that what you're aspiring to do? Or do you want it, there are all kinds of rules we can create.
Yeah, I mean, cause, cause it is, it is different. And, and the mission and the vision are so similar in so many ways, but in one of them, we do need to talk about an overall environment, right? And that overall environment needs to talk about whether it's our health, our public service and our partnerships. And then the day-to-day is a little bit different. So I think, I think with our vision, we can talk about an overall environment. That, that collaborates with our partners and, and, you know, uplifts and empowers, whatever the word we want to use. But, but I do think at some point, either in the mission or the vision, we should talk about just an overall environment, just a holistic approach of what Sedgwick County is trying to do. It doesn't have to be word environment. It could be community or whatever.
Right. That's a concept we're trying to get at.
Yes.
Anything else? Alright, we'll keep working. The next one, uh, these were the value state, value, uh, concepts that we brought back to you the last time. Um, from the work and the work groups and our meetings, we tried to narrow those down. There's not a magic number here. We have five. Um, but tried to bring those concepts into other areas. We will keep working on the, on some of the definitions of the values, but we have five listed here. The one that you talked about that you definitely wanted last time was the word trust, was one of the values that you wanted. Um, we were trying to define that in the idea of how that works with partnerships, colleagues, whoever that you are encountering, that that would be a trusted environment. We talked about ethics. We tried to bring in the idea of transparency, um, responsible, um, behavior here. Collaboration, again, that was a big part of the conversations from last time that none of this work is done alone and so that we have to be good in collaborative efforts. Um, compassion was one that came from both the work with the work teams, but also from your conversation last time, that this work is about service and direct connections with others. And then the one, uh, the final one was professionalism, really the idea of, of wanting to make sure that we are always, um. Striving forward through best practices, innovation, using data and information to achieve what we are accomplishing. So really what we're looking for from you here, um, we know we still have wordsmithing to do on the definitions, but. If, if the val- are we on the right track with the values? Are there ones that you're like, hmm, that's not really what I want, or I'd rather go back to one of these others that we had listed, listed previously? The black-on-black print did not work well, so we might want to go back on, pull that up on the TV while it's done before that reads better.
I feel like collaboration and professionalism are kind of similar in nature, right?
I, I think honest, integrity and, and ethical are also very similar. If you're ethical, then you're going to be honest and you'll have integrity. They're, they're synonyms actually. I, I, if you're trying to simplify this and make some, some people can, people can actually quote and use, I don't know, we need three different terms for something that's so similar. They're very overlapping in my opinion, those three things. You can't have one without the other two.
I think.
What are these values?
Yeah, she, she took those out and this is what we have left. Well, again, I like the, the collaboration. Uh, I really like partnerships better honestly, but, uh. That's what we do. If we create partnerships, uh, whether it's through the people that serve us, uh, our, our community, through contracts that we have, through comp care or wherever. Uh, we have partnerships all over the place with the city, with businesses and so forth, so. I don't know, I like that better than collaboration because it just sounds like we're working together in a different way. We're equal.
I may have to respectfully disagree. I like, I like the word partnerships, but I actually like the word collaboration a little bit better personally, so just. I see your point, but I, I like the word collaboration personally.
I think the five you have here are probably the direction that, yeah, I think once you start eliminating the, the things that are similar up there. The, the five you've got are probably where we need to be for our values.
Any other feedback on values? I think, I think we can work on collaboration. That, that one has stuck out so much because it's been talked about a lot. Trying to work that into language of value statement has been a little, little challenging there. Um.
Well, I wonder, out of that list though, I, I don't see professionalism, but I see respect twice.
Yeah.
You know, I wonder if instead of professionalism, I mean, I think respect goes along with being a professional. You respect the person you're talking to. Kind of your behavioral type word.
Yeah, I know if Dave Unruh was here, respect would be at the top of his list. This is one thing he always told me over and over again, is we have to be the most respected government in this area. That's what, yeah, his goal was.
So i- is the, so my question back, are respect as, um. Respected, what we had had here is more on the professional behavior, is the, a leadership of professionalism and, and with that. Respect, and that does kind of respect it, what you're talking about, leadership in that role. Respectful really is the interactions and kind of the behavior within people. Are we trying, do you want to differentiate between that or those two different concepts, or do you see those as the same, I guess?
I think there is a difference between those two.
Okay.
And I think we need to be something that, uh, we aspire to be the best that we can be. I'm not trying to steal my army terms, but. We, we, we want to be a very, very respected government in this area.
I like what Johnson County says about respect. They say, "We actively recognize the dignity and worth of every individual, extending to them kindness and courtesy. We listen and seek to understand each other in different perspectives. We stand against prejudice and intolerance, intolerance, seeking acceptance and inclusion for all." They break it into core values and behavioral values. I'm not saying we should do that. I'm just saying this is another way that it's done.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
They have a government leadership philosophy, then a mission statement, then a mission statement, then core values. Behavioral values, operational values. And everyone's a mouthful.
We, we thought we had heard a little bit of more, but definitely different organization approaches differently and there is no right or wrong. We're trying to figure out what you.
Yeah, in your, uh, nine hundred and fifty interviews, I mean, does that consist, did, did people prefer less words than more? Or did you even get that?
We didn't ask that question. I think it was in our interviews with you and kind of what we heard within the work teams is.
Is that still how everybody feels? Or expanded?
Other feedback on values?
I hope you're listening to what Commissioner Cruz said about respect. I guess we're gonna have to put it in there two ways somehow. Cause, uh, I think we probably need both directions.
Okay. We'll try to figure out some differentiating language here, so.
And, and one, one where we're respecting people and one where we want to be respected as well.
I also think that respect come, is a, is a way that you interact with people, but professional is, is everything, it's your image, it's your, it's what people see across the room. It's not necessarily the interaction. It's everything, it's, it's, it's people's perception, uh, even if they don't interact. It's how, that's how they view the county. So I, I, I like to, you know, I understand the idea of respect and certainly professional, you're also respectful. Again, I think they overlap each other. But professional, I think encompasses it as well. So I, I like the idea of professional because we're talking about, you know. Changing our website, changing some of our dress standards. There's lots of things in this that might tie into the word, you know, professional. But it may not tie into the word respect. I think there's, there are some differences, but they also do overlap. So I'm not against the word professional. I think it encompasses the, the idea of respect. If you're not, if you're a professional, you're not going to be disrespectful. They overlap, you know, I don't know if that makes sense.
All, all of this, I think, and kind of, Tom was on it, right? These are demonstrated behaviors. How would we, how would we hold each other accountable if we are doing this? And so I think it's figuring out that language to, to make sure both are represented. Any other feedback on values? You guys got the forty-five minute version of, of the work of the work teams here, so thank you for, uh, giving us direction. I think our next step with this will be to come back with you with some revised versions and maybe, um. Small group meetings to make that, to see if we're getting closer with that. Okay. The next part of this work is really to give you just an overview of where the work teams are going. So if you think of all of this work, as we talked about it before, it's kind of the funnel approach. So we've talked about vision and mission and values, really high up concepts we're going. Um, and then we get to the kind of the goal areas of, of where this work is. So we've had four meetings with the work teams. And the, the work that they have been doing is really focused on, uh, the information we've shared so far, but also on goals, strategies and performance indicators. How would we know if we're getting there? So we're giving you kind of the high-level direction, what we see the big concepts coming out of this today, um, just to check in, to see if we are on the right path. Anything else that you want to advise us on? Um, and then we will continue to bring this back, um, as this work progresses. So the first, um, area is human resources. And this has been a topic in all of the work groups that has come up about the importance of staffing, compensation, um, creating an, an environment where employees are empowered and engaged in that work. Um, it's also been thinking about different benefit options. I know that this came up in some of our conversations with you, the workforce of tomorrow and what their expectations are for benefits. May be different than what has been traditionally done. And then the other kind of conversation that's been happening is the recruitment. So we know talent is a critical issue for, uh, every organization. Sedgwick County is no different for that. So how do we think about recruiting differently and reaching diverse populations, um, with a part of that? So I'm on page seven, if you guys are following along here, um, with that. So those are the been, kind of the high-level conversations that have been happening with, with human resources, um, efforts there. Any questions on that or, um, other, other things that you were concerned or wondering about with human resources?
Each of our major departments have got their own area in here, like HR and.
So this, this is not at the department level. These are kind of at the work team level. So how we would see this happening is there's, these, these are issues that trans, are transferable across all departments. So the issue of compensation, issue of recruitment, issue of, um, creating the environment, no matter what department you are, these seem to be, uh, critical topics that as an organization you should be addressing. Individual departments, sheriff office obviously is going to have some different issues that they're going to be addressing within their department, yeah.
But they're going to develop a part in this, uh, just for their departments? Is there, uh, how do we get it down to the?
To the, yeah, so we.
The workers.
Yeah, so we, one, so let's. Yeah, so we, one, solicited feedback from all of them to get kind of at this higher level. This would be the Sedgwick County strategic plan for the whole organization. And then departments, we would be creating their own within, that would get down to more specifics with it.
Okay, good.
That make sense? Tom, did I say that right?
That's right.
Okay. Any questions on human resources? Okay. I think, based on our interviews with all of you, there's a lot of overlap in the conversation too, things you guys were talking about. Technology is another issue that no matter what work team we were talking with, this came up as an important area. Um, everything from just keeping up, uh, with the changing technologies that are out there and how do you do that in an, an efficient way? Because you could be purchasing new technology, um, all the time. So how do you really focus in on issues where you're impacting business practices, is where that conversation? How do we really make sure that return on investment is there? The invest in collaborative technology, um, this really got to the more technical where we have a lot of systems that may not talk with each other, uh, whether that's within our organization or with partner organizations. So how do we think about technology, uh, that has a more collaborative feel, that can be, have a bigger impact because it's working together? So we don't have siloed information, um, in practices. Data and using data more effectively, again, this was a concept that was shared across the organization, um, from everything of how do I know what clients I'm serving here? Um, and how could we maybe better ser, we serve them in another area? To just making strategic decisions on what, how we're, how services are being accessed in you. So there was a lot about just the, the use of data. Um, and then just the simple things of how do we find things? So how do we find things on the website? How do we use our internal operations more effectively? Um, so just the, the very basics of. Those are kind of the high level concepts on technology. Again, any feedback from you, anything that you've got might be missing or wanted to make sure we talked about within our work teams?
Yeah, there's not any surprises, we've been hearing about it.
We've been in the budget process, yeah.
I assume it's all under one umbrella type, that's our goal. I'm not sure if that's set in there to be consistently under one system, I think is our goal. All departments, meaning.
I think that's kind of what we're trying to get on the collaborative technology too, internally and externally, how do we use that better?
Communications was another topic that came up in each of the work teams. Um, it also mirrored the conversations we had when doing the interviews about improving the perception, the community perception, finding better ways to engage the community on different issues or, um, programs or processes that are provided by Sedgwick County, as well as how do we start to grow the public trust? How do we get the public to trust in the work that, um, we're doing as well as creating transparency? And there's huge conversations around, how do we look for multiple channels to deliver the message? How do we get ahead of the message before media outlets get the, um, get the information so that we can tell the narrative ourselves? As well as this idea of enhancing the website, which also bled over from the technology conversation. How do we make it more user friendly? How do we ensure that the information that the community needs, they have access to it in a very concise way? Um, so that was the general conversation out of communications. And it really mirrors the conversations that we think we heard when we did the interviews with each of you as well. Is there anything missing or, um, anything missing from that conversation that you think we need to make sure we capture?
I think our community has a hard time understanding what is we actually do. I think that we could probably help, um, make it easier to understand.
Commissioner, do you see that in, uh, access to services or how the work is done or, can you, can you see more of it?
Well, I guess from sitting in my chair, you know, the one thing that I've really, that people have really appreciated has been constant updates about what we are doing as a commission. Um, you know, because we are the ones setting the policy, we are the ones setting this budget, it's kind of important that the public understands how we do it.
Okay.
Um, so maybe that's one aspect that people don't get.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I really think that our communications department did a great job of keeping people abreast of things that are happening, but that was the number one thing that I heard was, what do you do? And maybe that's just as a commissioner, so maybe that's the illusion, I don't, I don't know, um...
No, what I hear you saying is the process, uh, right? How do we get from decision making to delivery of the service?
Yeah.
Touches them.
I, I would add to that. I get, uh, a lot of questions, uh, what's the difference between city and county? Tom, you probably have gotten that before. Dale, others that have been around. So it's kind of hard to compartmentalize, to say, well, we're really involved in community health at a lot of levels. All variations of corrections, juvenile, adult. Really, you guys do that too? Yeah, yeah, kind of. Besides the sheriff, and everybody knows the sheriff in the jail, so it gets, it's a little convoluted in, in the met... Or unclear in our, maybe that's, just kind of echoes what, uh, what Lacey was saying about maybe, uh, we need to tell what we do in a, in a broader sense or in a more informative sense. Do you feel that, Tom, a little bit sometimes?
Sure. And I think, to Commissioner Cruz's statement, I think it's even more basic and I think that people generally do not understand what the county does. Uh, and we've talked about this first, there are all these, uh, departments and elected offices that segment, and it's a tough, it's a tough story to tell.
It is, e- even if you say county roads and bridges, but they say, well, how come there's dirt roads here? Well, that's kind of a, that's not under our jurisdiction, that's under townships. Uh, really? Well, it's an, it gets a little, little confusing on various levels. Dale's shaking his head, yes.
Instead of that last week on a plaque where people were wanting the road to be improved, Dave's group is going to take care of the township road, help somebody out, but the township was unwilling to do anything. But the speaker thought it was the county's job.
Right.
The other thing I had at my, um, citizens advisory board was we had this worksheet that was, who is it? Or who does the service? And it was, you know, zoo, EMS, um, fire. It was just, you know, check who does it. And, you know, fire is county and, um, cities, you know? So, I mean, even something as simple as that, you know, take the quiz, who is it? You know, if it's interactive, the one thing that the city has just put out right now is tax dollars and how, you know, if you want better roads, this is what it's going to cost you. Um, so interactive stuff like that, that kind of helps people understand. Or they can go on and do it themselves that maybe will, I mean, our zoo is kind of even complicated to me, you know? Half is paid by the society and, you know? So that, those kinds of intricacies, um... If we could help people understand those in an easy to understand way, I think that that would really help people get, um, what they're paying for.
Okay.
I, I think people, when they're pretty happy, they don't pay attention necessarily to what's going on. They may, they may, may not know how things work until they have a problem, then they dig into it, figure out which, who they have to talk to. And that, that's when they become involved in interacting with county is when they've got an issue that brings them to the, brings the subject into, into their mind. But to educate people about the county government, I don't know that they're, they'll generally be receptive to just simply wanting to be educated. I don't think that's likely. But I do think there's a lot of good news stories, and I think we ought to be, I guess, really proactive in getting as many good news stories out as possible and finding ways to get them on social media or other forms of advertising. I think we continue to have a, a, to the nation and to the, to the nation, I think we're still considered backwards in this area. They don't understand what, a very high technology community. Um, there's a lot of prosperity opportun, opportunities in this, in this area, and I think our, our communication needs to get out beyond our own borders. So telling those good news stories and, and, and trying to show people outside, you're talking about economic development, showing people, you know, beyond our borders, why this is an extraordinary place ought to be the goal of our communicators. And, uh, I, I think it's great to have a great website and, and to be responsive to those in, inquiries when, when they come. But the idea we're going to educate people on county government, I think is, is probably a little, I mean, I mean, it's a, it's a nice idea, but I don't know how effective that will be. It's, I just think people are pretty happy and they're busy, you know? Till they have a real need for it, they may not come and, and hear that. They just, they know the zoo's there, they don't know who pays for it, you know, for example. They, they know the jail works, they don't know how the money behind the scenes works to make that happen. I don't know, they just know the government works. And so to the extent that our people who interface with county government, you know, that, that receive the benefits of county government, they may not really realize how those things happen, but they're very grateful at their place and to the extent they're content, we don't really have a lot of interaction necessarily until there's a problem, so.
But I think when there is a problem and someone comes to our site trying to navigate the plethora of, of pages and the information that's on there, I think that's when we have, we have a responsibility to help people understand it in an easy to, easy to manage way. Uh, like with all these tax abatements, you know, we just denied a guy and he, he gave me the whole spiel of how, you know, he was told to do this and he went through weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks of this process. Um, you know, and so now as a commissioner, I have to explain to him. And, and I'm fine doing that, but I'm just saying, like, how can we help people understand when they do need us, when they do come to our services in an easy to understand way so that it isn't confusing? Because when things are confusing, it's almost like, ooh, there's something to hide. They are trying to trick me, you know? That's when people lose trust is because they don't understand it. And so I think we do have a responsibility to make it easy to understand.
That navigation of, of complex systems that you're operating.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree with you, Commissioner Cruz. I, I just, and I think that things ought to be easy to navigate as possible, but I'm seeing, I think communication has, has two hats. One hat is, we try to find a way to connect them with information that they need.
Right.
And that's what Commissioner Cruz was talking about. Make that, make that as easy, as simple as possible. But the other part of communication is to tell our good news stories.
Right.
In a way that they are find, that they do find interesting. And, um, they're not going to be lectured, you know? But they, if they find something interesting, then they, they might pay attention to that. And I think there's lots of, there's lots of really great news stories across our county that we are involved in as an organization. And I think it's up to us to find a way to, to, to tell that story.
That promotion piece.
That's it. And some of it might, some of it might take other forms of communication. We've never really explored television and billboards and radio. There, or, or, or print, uh, media. We simply lean on our website and social media, maybe that's not enough. Okay? I, I don't know if there's other things we've got to be looking at. But communication to me is, it's exactly what Commissioner Cruz said, is also telling that good news story and effectively. And I think that's, that's the part where I think we're, we're struggling the most. I think actually I see both, both of those things actually could be a lot better.
I'm glad you're supportive in those efforts because that's what I've been trying to do the entire time and that's what I have been doing. And as a communication perfection, professional and what I've been doing my entire career is helping people understand in the medium in which that people utilize things. So yes, billboards and newspaper and all those traditional type of outlets are important. I don't necessarily believe that's where our community is going. And I think that everybody right now, I mean, two commissioners, I don't mean to call you guys out, but you're both on your phones. He's on his phone, you know what I mean? Everybody's on their phones, that's where we get our information from. So I think that we are doing a great job of that, um, especially when we, when it comes to recruitment, you know? That's where we need to be at. Are we doing Facebook ads on Facebook about open positions? You know, those, those are the things that we have to start thinking, especially if we want to recruit new people into our organization that are going to start out at those starting wages, which is what we're paying.
And then you also say, I'm, I'm happy with our communications people, they're doing a great job, so I'm not being critical to them. But I think this idea of, of marketing, what we do, our good news stories, I've been talking about this for years, by the way, and I, I'm glad we, thank you.
Well, and I do think we have been doing more Facebook ads, um, particularly with Public Works and our, um, tire collection, our household hazardous waste, isn't that right, David? And we've had record numbers the last few years since we've been doing these things, the e-waste event, because that is how you're going to reach everybody. So, in, in a, in a cost fact way, because television ads just, I mean, I think people would be ticked off if they saw government spending that kind of money running TV and radio ads. I know I would be.
When I look at communications, I don't want to look at it as, uh, one of our departments in here. I want to look at it as an umbrella that, that shares information on what, uh, the good things that are happening within this organization so the public can understand what's going on. So, this morning, I missed first part of the meeting, uh, because I was over at, at an award ceremony, but the, the guest speaker was Sierra Scott. And, uh, so she took to task.
Who's that?
The, uh, the news media. She basically said, "We're not getting the real news of what's happening in our community." It was the theme of, of her speech this morning. And she said, for example, how, how, I'll just use one of hers, uh, "What organization here in Sedgwick County was nominated for a Tony? Does anybody know?" Uh, Fruhoff was nominated for a Tony because of the musical Music Man. Uh, they made all the band uniforms for the...
Wow.
Uh, and does anyone know that? Uh, and so that's what we need to look at for our communications. Does anyone know what we're really doing here in Sedgwick County? Uh, if they did, they wouldn't ask, uh, Commissioner Cruz and I, "Well, what do you do in Sedgwick County?" Because that's probably the number one, uh, question I get once I tell someone I'm a commissioner, uh, is they have no idea. So I, I don't want to look at this as a department, I want to look at it as an umbrella over the entire county. And how do we get these good news stories out so that people know that we're doing something like Fruhoff got nominated for a Tony? So, just.
And I think it's important, so are the folks within, all of your staff, that this was, uh, one of those issues that was transform, transformed all of the departments, right? This is a topic they all know is important, and so I think that that's, that's a great point.
And just to be clear, I'm not advocating for me spending a huge amount of tax dollars on television ads, that's not what I'm saying. I'm simply saying, find ways to get the messages out, whatever that happens to be, and obviously do that efficiently.
So the next conversation that kind of stretched across all of the departments was around financial sustainability. Um, and that was really about looking for opportunities to expand resources and to secure funding as well as, um, developing viable options to address financial issues. And I'm sure you guys have been really enthralled in this now that you're in budget season. Um, and so this was a big conversation that every department had questions about or every department had needs in relationship to the sustainable, sustainability from a financial perspective, as well as also thinking about what are the innovative ways that we can create efficiencies? Where are those low hanging fruit that we may gain opportunities to reduce some of our costs so that we can utilize those funds in other areas that allows us to have some of the sustainability that we're looking for, um, in our process work as well as the things that we do within our divisions? So that's kind of the general high level scope of what they're looking at from a financial sustainability place. And again, this is one that rises to the top, that covers all departments, and it's not necessarily something that you'll see in the individual work teams as we get further into the work. Thoughts, questions?
The only thing that I think about when I think of this, I mean, expand efforts to secure local, state, and federal resources. I mean, I wonder how much money comes into our county as a grant from the state? And it's probably a lot, right? Am I, am I, okay in assuming that?
Federal and state.
Okay, federal and state? So I guess I'm just kind of shocked that we don't have somebody that works for the county that is simply focused on grants, or do we? We do?
So, uh, we do have a revenue management area of the county, but to your point, they're not necessarily actively seeking out those grants for departments, that's really tends to be looked up to the departmental staff.
Okay.
Um, but we can trust them at once they're received or, you know, for applying, kind of see what the rules are and then figure out how we're going to manage the ones we get.
Okay, so they manage the ones that we've already kind of been getting, but to seek out new opportunities, we're not actively doing that? Or it's up to the department?
Right, you don't have a dedicated single employee.
Okay.
So they just do, departments have been doing legacy grant re-upping?
That and seeking.
Would it behoove us to look into that?
Yeah, I mean, I think we could, um, we could take a look at our grant policy, uh, and then, and then maybe, and talk about a focal point, how. and then, and then maybe talk about a focal point, how probably in the system of finance that would seek out grants. And then, it's really important that you have the department involved for a couple of reasons. Number one, they know Mark's level, generally the facts of the state, the field, so they're going to know the national stage better than somebody sitting on the east or here with, or any of us. And two, when it comes down to actually crafting the document when they're applying for the grant, that is the level of expertise you need. But to say that you could have your focal point, I think we could.
Other thoughts? Okay, so we will keep on going here. So now we're going to kind of get into the work team specifically. Looking at Public Works, a lot of the conversation was around developing local renewable energy regulations. Looking at the current regulations to see how they need to be revised and/or enhanced in any kind of way. Looking at regional infrastructure projects and how the county may partner in developing those activities as well as thinking about this concept of walkable communities. How do we start to look at the policies that are written and driving the conversation? And that work more intentionally on creating the walkable communities as we start thinking about having healthier communities and moving forward the master plan that has already been created through MABCD.
I know four of, or five of us are on WAMPO and we talk about walkable communities a lot, but is, is that a real, we list four things for Public Works, is that that important because of the county? Cities, certainly. Municipalities really focus, well, they hardly focus, we help focus, but they deliver the, the end product. I don't know, I don't know that as a county, I don't know if we have a lot of play in walkable communities in the county if we're looking at our mission.
But it's not just that, I don't, do we do anything with renewable energies? I mean, in your department?
Well, with Public Works, we also have plenty of public people there in our municipal in our group. So, um, you know, we've been talking about wind turbines and solar panels.
Yeah.
Uh, but back to your comment, Mr. Chairman. We do a lot of interconnection between bike paths like Wichita to Haynesville. And we're in between like from Derby to Mulberry. And we're in between like from Derby out to Spirit and we're in between. So, we, we do quite a bit of that type of thing to connect all the paths for everybody. Now, I don't say that that's the biggest thing we do because it's not.
I just see four things listed here and I think that you do, or that Public Works altogether does things that are much more significant than some of the things that are listed here.
Including like drainage, stormwater, things like that are critical.
Yeah. We just, we just had a ridge road that we could have killed somebody on if some people from Public Works hadn't have identified that we were going to lose a major culvert on that. If somebody would have hit that in the middle of the night and that culvert went out, somebody would have died. So, I don't know, I, this to me is not putting as much emphasis on Public Works as ought to be there. I just, I don't feel comfortable with these four things.
Well, the second one's all right. I mean, that's a bit...
Yeah. And the fourth one is all right, but I don't know.
Yeah.
High level of conversation, yeah.
The fourth one should be the first thing, right?
And these are noteworthy, these are...
Right, right. But that, that needs to be really what we're hitting. We're doing these regional projects and we're, and going back to our partnerships, we're assisting all of our townships, our cities in Sedgwick County. We're collaborating and working with all of our other partners. But Public Works also, and going back to what Jim talks about all the time, works to develop things for stream maintenance and flooding issues too, which is critical. And especially days like today, you, you think about how critical what Public Works does every day is for our...
And no place in here is this safety and that's probably one of the most important things they do is keep our communities safe on our roads and, and all of the infrastructure that they maintain.
That's right. And Miss Yumai put that it's the mother's milk of economic development in there.
Yes.
That's my, that's my phrase, give me all the credit.
Yeah, maybe a foot note, but we'll make sure of that.
But, but it is...
I'm aware of here is a higher level of conversation.
But it is, but it is an important piece of eco-devo.
It is.
And safety and everything else.
Right, and safety.
So, Francis, so the earthquake from two days ago, four point four, whatever it was, do, do we have a team that says we got these critical junctures to make sure they weren't affected? I know the, the city does to make sure, especially water pipes that are buried or not.
All bridge engineers look at, the thing that would affect us most would be the bridges.
Okay.
Yes, there was a rule and I don't have it in my head of how far you are from the epicenter of the ridge and that sort of thing.
Okay.
And that would affect us. Yeah, we, we do that on our own downpour boards.
Okay. I just wondered yourself.
We have not had much effect on our bridges at this point.
Just curious.
We'll, we'll bring that one up next. Moving on to public safety, conversations have focused on opportunities of consolidation within the public safety area. Increase awareness of issues in public safety. Sedgwick, Sedgwick County is a leader when you talk about substance abuse issues, mental health issues that impact public safety, so continuing that work. Ensuring coordination and resources for social services. So, again, public safety is impacted by these other areas and how to make sure that those coordinations give up their vision of where that is going. So, your recent hire of two new coordinators to work in that area I think exemplifies that work and direction I think it should be heading. And then engaging in state national legislative initiatives on corrections were some of the, the big pieces here that they're talking about. Does that seem like the right direction that they're heading with public safety? Are there big issues you'd want them to keep in mind?
Well, it's not ready for prime time yet, but, but this incredibly cooperative effort to send this triage of people out for, through nine one one, it's got a, a law enforcement, a social worker and an EMS type support. And that has got the capability of, because it's so regionally cooperative with the city and everybody's involved and it fire, both fires.
Commissioner, you've been involved a long time. I think that's exactly what, that's that spot they're trying to figure out. How do we, public safety can act alone with some of that, right?
Right. And that's where communications, once we get there, we need to be, we need to really brag about that.
It kind of plays into the third bullet piece.
Right. Yep. Well, this one, what we got here again kind of leaves me a little bit cold because of how broad our public safety is. But it starts with nine one one, our EMS, our fire, our sheriff's department. And I don't know if our sheriff's department bongs in this because he probably is doing a separate one for himself.
They've been actively involved in this, yeah.
We, we've all been involved.
But, uh, I, you know, I, I understand the consolidation stuff is probably our fire department. But beyond that, we haven't really touched on the real providers of our, of our public safety, I don't think in this. Again, this morning when I was over there, and I'll talk about it more here at the end, but, you know, they recognized the nine one one dispatcher that went out and first dispatched Deputy Kunsy to the event and then had to recover Deputy Kunsy at the end. So, how do we, how do we get across to people that we've got folks like that out here that are doing that job every single day? It goes back to communications, what you're talking about, Tim.
Well, I mean, the thing about public safety in the county is comprehensive compared to municipality. Because literally we have a component of first responder, which is Sherrod, and then of course nine one one, then you have court system and corrections on the other thing. We really have a comprehensive which differentiates the county from cities. Or the state for that matter. Counties are really, they only have to have all three components of public safety going along the way. So, difficulty to spread that info.
I'm having trouble figuring out, this is, this section's called goal areas and you're talking about mission, vision, values, goals, strategies and performance indicators. How often is this going to be update? Because this seems like it's really focused on some things at the moment. But if this is something we're going to write and plan on guiding us for some period of time, this is not, this can't be, this can't be, it can't be this simple and this small.
No.
This, this, if this is something we're going to talk about for the next six months or so, that's fine. But I don't know how, if that's what we're having this conversation for, this...
We are still at a very high level of the conversation right now. So, we're just trying to get the, the, this isn't the individual strategies. These aren't the indicators for that. It is, these are the broad topics that we're trying to address within this plan. So, it is, it is future conversations for this. So, coordination of services, awareness of public safety behind the, the issues that are impacting the community. Those are all long-term issues that we'll continue, continue to work on.
Public safety is probably one of the biggest sectors of Central County organization. And I think break that down, each of the, each of the areas of, or each of the agencies that I would say fall into public safety, they have very specific unique goals. And they're very different, this is, you know, they're not really the same goals as other parts. So, I don't know that you can have a header called public safety and then write four bullet points. It encompasses all the goals of that organization. It's just such a big part of our organization.
Agreed.
I think one thing that, and I don't know if it belongs here or where it belongs, but these people are highly trained. They, they go through rigorous training more than just once. So, I mean, to me, when you want to build public trust, think about the professionals that are coming out and how frequently they're trained or the type of training that we provide to them. Like I said, I don't know if that goes here, but I was impressed with how smart these people are, how, how much they know. Because that, I mean, we train our deputies, right? I mean, you come in and be a deputy and we train you. Our EMS, they go through a training every one, every so often. I think that that's important to talk about.
And just to go back to what Commissioner Howell talked about, it's what we practice, what we call strategic plan. The, the mission and the values, those are long-term commitments. When, when you break down, when you start talking about goals, those are likely to be clearly refreshed every once in a while. And then the goals actually break down into how we give performance approvals in this organization. So, you're constantly going to be digging in the strategic part of that. But the, the mission and values that we set forth now, and they even should be looked at every, you know, three to five years. You should revisit those. But, but this part of the discussion right now, I think is, is a discussion at a point in time. And some of them are very long-term and some of them are, are things we're immediately tackling now. You'll constantly, the organization staff will constantly be looking at this, at this piece, as will you, so.
But I don't think we'll be sitting around this table with Misty here having this conversation in six months to a year or two years.
No, I think it'll happen at the department levels, at, at the, at the group levels. I think they'll be having these kinds of discussions and, and... But it all, it all boils back to you at some point because when we change gears and when we look at other consolidations or we need money for some, we always come, always come back to the commission. You're the people. So, it always will come back to you. But the staff will be having these constant discussions over the next, for as long as this plan is in effect, so.
Have we actually asked the departments to define their goals so we can see what they are? I mean, each department has their goals. What, I'd like to know what OMD's goals, goals are. And have we encompassed that in our summary here today? And if you go down to, you know, forensic, Forensics Science Center, have we encompassed their goals?
I, I, would be correct on any of this. I think right now we are at a very, we are at thirty thousand foot level. We are trying to broad sweep these components that have similarities, though they're not the same. Public safety, for example. And then I think we further drill down. And at some point, yeah, Gallagher has, you have to ask him what OMD's goals are.
I, I guess I'd say, I think the last time we went through this, you know, we can criticize the previous process, but I think we went the other direction. I think we went from organizational up to summary statements versus a starting with a summary statement and working all the way down to the division level. And my point is, I don't know that the summary statements can direct the division level goals if we haven't included them in front of the conversation. I think the other, the last time we went through this process, we started with the whole organization and said, what are you guys wanting, you know, and we summarized and summarized and brought things together and found parallels and, you know, and we, we continued to simplify, but we ended up, well, we ended up with a final project. I feel like we're going the other direction this time.
Well, Commissioner Howell, I think, I think they did that. I mean, that's, that was with the hundred and twelve sessions of meetings with the nine hundred and fifty-three employees. So, I think to say that they didn't engage, I don't, I don't feel like it was an accurate statement.
I hear, I hear what you're saying and, and I guess my question would be, do we have the data that says that each of these organizations have essentially in the process and defined their goals? Is that available to us?
So, we are starting at the top, right? With all, with the big picture of where are we going and what are the broad concepts that transcend these different areas? So, when we talk about human services or public safety or any of these areas, what are the big topics that they're all talking about? Then we will continue to drill down because all of these issues will, will play out differently in strategy implementation within these departments. But they have to know where we're going. So, what's the target? So, as Tom was saying, right, this is, we're still up here at the concept level. We aren't to the strategy implementation to departments level. We're just trying to give you the update on, this is where we're at. These are what they're talking about right now and get your feedback of. We really want to be talking about this as well.
So, these hundred and twelve sessions, nine hundred and fifty-three employees, it wasn't about their own position and their own organization and about what they, what they view as their goal for their, their division or the organization or their agency? This is more like philosophical, what do you want to see with the county? Where, where do you see the county needs to go?
We asked a combination of that. So, we asked big picture thinking of what, where the county is going, but we also asked them very specifically within their work areas, what do you see as the big issues that need to be addressed? So, we tried to find that, different levels to engage them on.
I, I would say, Commissioner, you're, the last time that we did this three years ago and why we were adding at this time is we wanted to rank and file and even all the way to division and department. We wanted them involved because they had been involved in the last one on the front end of that. And we, that's why we were insisting on whether this is taking so long, it's kind of hard process. Because at some point we wanted, but they told us that. They told us that in November when we were talking about what we were going to do with the marketing plan. They wanted some input this time. So, I have no recollection last time when we did, when Mark did this from Colorado, where he went out and probed employees like Misty and the other team, and it did not happen. And that's one of the things we wanted to do this year with me, this time.
I don't, I don't disagree with you and I think that would be great to include more people, as, as many as possible. But I think the process of going from the employees and feeding information up to the summaries that we're using today. The mission statement should be based on all the employees providing information from their perspective and summarizing it and then summarizing it and, and...
But that's exactly what we...
All that till you end up with, in other words, the mission statement is almost the last thing you end up with. Because you end up with, it's, it was not, it shouldn't be philosophical. It should be, it should be based on, the process drove us to that point. And we've started, we've kind of started with a mission statement and worked the other way. So, I hear what you're saying, I'd like to involve as many, as many people as possible, but I think that, that this seems more philosophical to me.
But, but if you look at the beginning slide, the slide where we developed the mission statement and all these word collages, that was the meetings with the employees throwing input at us before we crafted a mission and value statement. We began, we asked them what was important to them globally and specifically and crafted these, and this is what we're, this is where we're at.
So, what I'm saying is, they were many people involved and I'm not going to dispute that. You're right. But from their perspective, they're adding, "I want the county to be respectful. I want to be collaborative." Those are great ideas and I don't disagree with them at all. I totally agree. But it's philosophical, it's not saying, "In our division, we've got a training problem over here. We need to address training in this way." Okay? That is, that's agency level challenge that they've got. They've identified a, a need and a goal and a vision for their agency. And that drives up to, if you will, you find, well, the other organization has the same problem we've got. So, we can put those two, two things together. And we have the same problem, we have, we now we see we have a training, a training challenge or, or, or vision. We want to do training differently in Central County. In other words, it drives the conversation rather than simply saying, "I want to, I want an organization to be respectful and professional or collaborative or, you know, empowered or, or whatever." I still think, even looking at those word buckets, that those kind of shows me that it was a philosophical discussion, probably with sticky notes on the wall.
It is, but you have to have a philosophical discussion to determine the mission and the value before you drive the train back down and get into the weeds and say, "Okay, now, here's the mission value. Now, tell us the challenges that you have within com care or the challenges you have within corrections." Now tell us the challenges that you have within com care or the challenges you have within corrections. And understanding these, this is our passion right now. This is our mission and our, our vision. We've already all determined that. Now how do we overcome those differences that you're getting at your grassroots sectional level? Understanding this is the big picture and how do we fix that? I think that has to come yet.
I'm just, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm surprised that these are the statements under these headings. I don't know, to me it seems disconnected to what's really going on in Central County. Or our real vision or our real mission and our real goals are. Doesn't, these don't seem to encompass that really. These sound philosophical to me. They don't seem like they're practical and really something you can implement. That's my problem.
Okay. So we're, we're not there yet with the detail, right? So we're still trying to make sure, are we talking about the right things when we talk about this? So issues about technology, human services, staffing levels, those are all of the big topics that we need to make sure are included in the strategic plan. How, we're not, that part of the question, right? How do we do that? That's the work that we're still on. We are coming back to you to say, are we on the right path identifying the big issues here? In some areas I think we are and some I think you're giving us feedback. It needs to be, we need more detail in those areas and we'll get there.
And even when we were going through the process, when you had the dialogue going on, there was discussion about grassroots levels. And we had to actually try to steer back to the big picture. But we didn't want to get higher than weeds while we were having this part of the discussion. But we actually, you're absolutely correct. We have to go back and put framework around this, so.
And we're, the departments across the organization have mission statements with specific, they have strategic plans with specific activities and actions tied to their specific problems. And so if you look at, I'm sure Corrections has something about training. Com Care has an issue about training. That's there at the department level. And this is higher level stuff. But we want to make, what, what our job is to make sure that what's going on in the department connects with the larger organization.
Let me just read it. Increase awareness of issues in public safety. I have no idea what that means. I, I don't know what, I don't know what you do with that. It, it, I read, I read the, the, the list of things that EMS and sheriffs and, and DA, that's a long list of public safety services and agencies we have in Central County. But when I say increase awareness of issues in public safety, I, you lose me. Because I don't even, I have no idea what that means.
So that, what we are hearing back from that is that we will provide more detail for you on where, what they're trying to get at. What they are talking about that is there's a lot of underlying issues that impact public safety that need to be discussed and addressed up there. Whether that's substance abuse or whether that's mental health issues, right? Those are, there's an awareness factor there of the impact that has. And I think anytime you all hear from the sheriff about jail and the issues there, right? There's an awareness piece that probably a lot in the community may not have yet.
I just use that as an example. I mean, I'm not specifically focused on that one. Just, just, I'm just making a point that that's the type of thing I'm getting a little, I guess. Pardon me?
You seem a little aggravated, I guess.
I'm not aggravated. I, I, I'm, maybe the word is disappointed. I, to me this is not as, it's just not as useful as I was. The strategic plan, in my opinion, ought to be a founding document that directs us. And I don't know what this does.
Well, Commissioner Howell, I think, I think this is a starting point. I think what they've done is they've given us the feedback that they've collected and now they're asking for our feedback. And so I think that you've provided that, wouldn't you say? You've provided that. And I think that now we know which direction to go. Didn't you say?
Right. So this is, this is just an update and maybe make sure we're clear about that. The strategic plan draft won't be done until August timeframe. We're just trying to let you know what we're talking about so that we don't get to August and you say, you know, that what happened, right? How did all this detail get here?
I greatly appreciate your work and I greatly appreciate this opportunity to do a dialogue today. We are down the path pretty far at this point. You've already got all your research done. You're in the, you're in the development stage. And so if I'm feeling disappointed now, I don't know if it's going to get any better necessarily. But in, in August, when this thing is finally done, I, I, and I'm sure we all agree, we need to have a, we hope to have a wonderful document that's extremely useful. And that's my goal. And I'm not, I'm just a little bit concerned that right now, what I see here, it seems to be far disconnected from what I think should be on this page. That's my, that's my challenge.
I think something to my help. Each one of these has a bunch of, we have a lot of background info. We chose not to provide that. We did give it to the executive team and they know kind of what, it is kind of confusing. It's a little bit out of context because each one of these has. So maybe we can provide a little bit more. We were trying not to give so much information that it was pages of info. So we've gone high level, but then that doesn't give you any context for that particular thing. So maybe we can pull something together, put it down or, like the next update, it'll be better detailed.
All right. My, my brief comment is that I, I still like the theory of the, of the thirty thousand foot top-down. I think it'd be way too much weeds if forty-six departments provided us their stuff. Others can take that data if they want to. I, I'm not interested in, in that way. I think, I like, I like for the departments to hear where we think we need to go as a county and let them apply their.
And, and we'll get to it, Commissioner. I think what you as the board of directors need to set for us is the thirty thousand foot level. And we will, we will put it together. But the thirty thousand foot level is very important to manage. Because if we are not managing to that, to what your expectations are, we are critical. And so we need this to happen so that we as staff know how to push our people, how to evaluate our people, how to, what jobs our people should be awarded or who the kinds of people we should even hire. That's what we, so this will all fit in.
If our, if our business was just making widgets and widgets only, it would be very easy for the widget workers and the widget managers to say, this is what we do and report to the bosses and say, all right, this is our mission statement. We've got forty-five departments. There's just no way we can take each department of widget and say, what's your mission? And then try to culminate that into a broader statement. From my perspective, I'm not sure that that even goes on in other.
So the people who've been widgets get in trouble.
Exactly.
All right, Misty, can I raise your human service?
Sure.
Yes.
We'll try to take to, I'll give you that high level issues that we're, the conversations have focused on. So human services has really been about community awareness and effective services, coordination among departments and for that collective impact that they can have and ensuring available resources for current and future services. So I think that demands in human services continue to grow. How do we do that in a more coordinated way? Making sure people are aware of the services that are available and what are the resources needed? So again, very high level of where the conversation is. Governance has focused in on both from the elected and appointed official view as well as administration, looking at some state statutes and how that connects with current practices. So that was a big conversation, especially with the other elected and appointed positions about the disconnect sometimes with that. Identifying opportunities to collaborate regionally and then preparing for the workforce of the future. So really as a community issue, you as elected officials pointed that out and trying to think about what that means from a governance perspective. How will we do it for that? I'm just going to keep going because I know where, any questions on that, yeah?
My, my brief comment is, I like the first two. And the workforce is the third one is fine. But that's a little bit detailed. I mean, public, I mean, our, our mental health issue is huge. I mean, workforce is huge. I don't.
We haven't.
If we're going to list, those are like sub-bullets, maybe? But the first two, the antiquated state and federal regulations. Identify opportunities regionally, nationally. Because our community is starting to track, thanks to, again, try to be, thanks to, to what's going on at WSU and WSU Tech, they're, they're bringing in national exposure from military side to, to federal electeds. And all of a sudden, our, our region is getting a lot of attention on a federal and national basis that, that we didn't have. And that's where we could play a role in helping support those efforts that are going on.
Culture and Rec had the opportunity to bring in some partner organizations for this conversation. It was done just a little bit differently. Collaboration with City of Wichita, Central County and other partner organizations, the quality of life type of issues like this happen across the board. So how do we improve that work? A lot of conversation on joint communication and promotion with partners to, to get a bigger view of, of that. And then just generally kind of facility improvements. We talked about some of the opportunities with the planning that's going on in downtown Wichita, but just in general, facility improvements to meet cultural arts and recreation expectations for the future. So again, broad, broad conversation. So last couple pages, just as overall on the project timeline. We are still working with the work teams and product management, trying to drill down farther into the detail of this work. We'll be working these next few months on the plan development. We'll be back and having more conversations with all of you to make sure we're trying to stay on the right track with all of that. Draft plan in August, community input, then later this fall. And the final plan is November is our timeline. So we appreciate the feedback and conversations today. This isn't easy work nor, nor should it be. It sets the direction for your organization. So greatly appreciate all of the work from staff and leadership. And you're taking an hour and forty-five minutes of your day to give us your input on things we should be thinking about. So thank you for all that.
Anything else from the commissioners? What else you got on your agenda? I'm sorry, I missed the first part, so I don't know where else you had.
We, let's begin with one first. We have a, we say it's related to her. Mrs. Green is wanting to know if we're going to have a meeting up there. I mentioned this a couple, three weeks ago for you to think about. Do you want to cancel that meeting and, or not?
Do you know how much we have on that draft agenda so far?
No. And what we can do, if you give us early enough notice, we can begin to push things off to an agenda for late June and massage that so that we can miss that. It would create a two-week block where we would not have a meeting, kind of similar to what we just went through here to the U of M. So I can't forecast what will happen. There's any, there's any budget issues, nothing right in there for budget that has to happen, so.
Most people are probably going to want to be taking off for something for Fourth of July. So I don't know if, if there is not a pressing issue to have a meeting that day, I'd probably look at skipping it because any commissioner have any reason to have a meeting that day?
No, I think it's great and just move it to the end of the month or move it to the last week of June.
As soon as long as we could throw a meeting on Fourth of June, if the last stack and that's full, we'll just watch it as it goes and we'll cancel it July third. And then if we have to do an extra meeting, then we'll make it the last meeting, the last week of June.
Yeah, that's great. Okay? Anything else?
Uh, I think Tim, we can get the microphone back over here. Talk about Governor Vito, some com care funding yesterday. I think it's important that Tim could talk about it here for a second while we have you all together.
This kind of fits in with all of the collaboration talk that we just talked about and our state and federal partners and that sort of thing. The crisis center funding in the 2019 budget was tied to lottery vending machines and revenue from lottery vending machines. And that was okay. The unfortunate part is that they did not in that budget fund the purchase of the machines. So there were no lottery vending machines to generate revenue to fund the crisis centers. So Com Care received their first half-year payment of 1.3 million dollars. So they got $650,000 in 2018, right at the end of 2018, to cover the first six months of the state fiscal year. The SPICS was to do a supplemental request for 2019 in the current legislative process to fund the second half of the 2019 fiscal year, so another $650,000. That was in the, that was worked throughout the course of the year, throughout the course of the session. That was funded in the supplemental, supplemental for 2019. Yesterday was the last day for the governor to veto items. She line item vetoed some funding for behavioral health. Included in that was the supplemental request for com care. So right now, we don't have funding for the current six-month period of time, January to June, from the state to support the community crisis center. Right now, the legislative solution for this is to veto the, to do an override of that veto. I've talked to Joan last night and today, it doesn't appear that there's going to be the votes to override that veto, at least right now. There were, the Association of Community Health Centers is working that issue right now. Joan's talked to a couple of different legislators already. It doesn't appear promising that they'll be able to generate the votes to override that line item veto. Administratively, one alternate, one solution may be if there is year-end funding in K Dad's budget, they could provide some of it back to com care. Unfortunately, the reason that the governor vetoed that line item was because she was trying to make sure she hit that seven and a half percent year-end. The, the balance. Thank you. And again, this was, this caught the department by surprise. Secretary Howard was not aware that this was going to happen. So everybody was caught by surprise here. So right now, the other thing that Joan and I have talked about is that we may have to strategically throttle back some services throughout the rest of the state fiscal year so that we can fund the crisis center till we get to 2019 state fiscal, or 2020 state fiscal year. Because the funding is in the budget for 2020. But right now, we're, we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do related to this shortage for the remainder of this state fiscal year.
That's not very good news this morning.
No, it's not.
It goes back to one of the questions I had over and over again when I was on the, Commissioner Meitzner and I were on the phone with Jason Watkins, was do we need to have a line in the budget for our behavioral health? For, especially for our crisis center? And no one seemed to want to take that on.
Sure, yeah.
And now it's come back to bite us because we don't have.
It's going to be under the umbrella of, of the budget. And so we did not push harder.
So.
We need to push harder.
Do we need to call the governor? Do we, what do we need to do at this point?
Well, I'd like to weigh in on this too. I'm not sure that there's, that the governor is in a position to be able to do anything differently, with the exception of directing the department to find funds within their current year budget. But I don't know that they're there. That's why they asked for the supplemental to fund this.
There was a supplemental coming out of?
Well, it was, it was a supplemental for 2019 funding. It's part of the budget, the 2020 budget. Not uncommon for them to do a supplemental for 19 as they approve the future year budget, their current year for the future year budget. This, and so this just got caught up in that, I think, her effort to get to the ending balance.
But they are going to try to override that.
Yeah, but if it's not going to work, boy, and it doesn't sound very promising, that's not going to help us with it.
Well, I, I don't know. I've heard that they think they can override that. I talked to Dan Hawkins last night and it starts in the House. He said, just spend some people's show up for the last day.
Is Dan, is Hawkins aware of this impact?
Yes.
What was the specific line item that, I mean, you say she vetoed, there's a line item, but what does that mean?
Well, there, this, the, the total budget had a supplemental request for additional funding for behavioral health. I don't think that she recognized that this was foundational funding. This was not enhanced funding. This was foundational funding for the 2019 year.
Foundation meaning traditional legacy.
Well, to get us through the 2019.
We have to have it in order to keep.
To get through the 2019.
Crisis center alive.
It was not additional funding for enhancements or anything like that. It was foundational. Again, it goes back to the way they had chosen to fund the crisis center in the 2019 budget with that lottery funding.
Maybe after, can you give Lacey the words that she needs so she can help?
Yeah, I need to understand, I guess.
We need to call Jason also.
I'm, I'm looking at calendar right now. We have a 2:30 meeting. All of you are meeting with GWP at some point, either this week or next week. And your two meetings today at 2:30. We could maybe just give Jason a call and talk with him about this.
Yeah, we, we're going to have to talk to Jason because if we can't get the veto overridden, we're going to have to find out what else we can do up there. This is, this is more significant than, than anything I've seen lately. And I think when our legislative agenda next year, as Mr. Papoon is writing down notes for what put in our legislative agenda, we're going to have to do, what I kept asking over and over again, that this gets put in to the budget so that we don't end up with this situation.
So when you recommended this call with Jason?
Right at the beginning, you guys are meeting. You guys are meeting with GWP at 2:30, so like just a few minutes before that, since I know you'll both be here. I'm not sure what your calendars look like today, so.
Might be strategically helpful that maybe Lacey sits in for me on that call.
Okay.
I have a two to 2:30 though.
Oh, you do?
I have an angle to it.
Then let's look at the other side of that. What about 3:30 for you?
I can do that.
Okay, let's do it on the other side. Let's flip that then and get Jason for 3:30.
Yeah.
Because we'll, we'll finish with GWP. Those don't take an hour, so we'll, we'll be able to leave that.
Okay, well, this is more important than GWP right now, honestly.
I just said that because I know I'd have, you guys were here today. I'd have to look at, check your schedule. So we'll, we'll do something this afternoon.
Okay.
And then immediately get it back to the rest of the commission on what's happening.
Good. Anything else?
No.
You can't even end up from good news?
No, well, Mike has a new lawyer. You wanna introduce him?
Yep. I was gonna ask you if you wanna introduce him.
Absolutely, Chris. Finally, after a lengthy search, we're lucky enough to get Jason Demasky to come join our department. Jason's been in the private sector for about nine plus years, worked with some very prominent one-of-long attorneys in town, and has a great litigation experience and one-of-long experience. And we're very fortunate to have him. I'll be bringing him around the most few. You know, we'll see. I'll have the opportunity to talk to him anytime as well. He's very involved in working with HR and all of the aspects of county businesses.
You're welcome. Got to meet him yesterday. Wanna welcome you to Sedgway County.
That is it.
That is it. Commissioners, anyone else have anything? Commissioner?
Just thinking ahead. I see we have a city-to-city tour planned if any of us are gonna go to that. But September the 11th to the 13th, and the 11th is a Wednesday. So I'm wondering if we can plan ahead on whether or not we're gonna have a meeting that day.
Well, I think most of us are going, so probably a meeting would be rather difficult unless we held it down there.
Or make sure we, I guess, put that on the calendar so we're not gonna have a meeting on September the 11th.
Good. Any other commissioners have anything this morning? I guess we are traveling on 9/11.
Drive down there, I guess.
Real briefly, I know Emily, she was in here a minute ago. I don't see her now. She took some nice pictures this morning. I'd like Communications to get pictures of the folks from Sedgway County that during other tomorrow that I can identify, those folks that received awards today. We just had Dr. Gallagher come in the room also today. We're gonna hopefully recognize him tomorrow morning. I don't know if we're gonna do that at the beginning of the meeting or during other.
Beginning.
At the beginning of the meeting, okay. So we have a number of folks that we need to make sure that we recognize. But the reason I was late to the meeting this morning is that, first of all, Sedgway County 911 EMT Dispatcher of the Year is Mary Showalter. Was recognized this morning. Sedgway County EMS Paramedic of the Year is Alex Thomas was recognized this morning. Sedgway County Firefighter of the Year is Chief Doug Williams. Sedgway County Sheriff's Office of the Year is Sergeant Ficken. So we, we need, I know that Emily was there and took pictures. At least if we can have some pictures during other that we can show to recognize those folks, I'd appreciate that very much. And the other thing that we probably ought to recognize during that portion of it is we've got some pictures of that road out on Ridge Road that I mentioned a little bit earlier. That, excuse me, that Public Works identified that we were about ready to lose the road, which could have been catastrophic if it would have happened at night. And the second problem that they had was that they tore the entire road out to replace the culvert that was under that. And...
What it looked like last Thursday morning?
If they didn't have it back in before these rains started yesterday, it would have washed out everything that they'd already done. So I think we need to get those pictures to show during other and recognize the individuals, if you can get the names or something that we can identify. I don't know how you want us to break it down or how far, but that... They, they saw a problem that normally would have taken four, five days, six days to fix. But they didn't have four, five, or six days to fix it because of the rains coming in, and they fixed it immediately. So we need to recognize our people that do things like that. Dr. Gallagher is gonna be recognized tomorrow morning for some, the work that he did to save an individual's life. So we've got that happening each and every day. And go back to what I mentioned earlier this morning when the keynote speaker at the breakfast I was at talked about, we all listen to the news every day. We hear hours of news every single day. But do we really know the good things that are happening in our community? And that's what we need to start making sure. And I wanna recognize the folks that do that, so. Any other staff have anything this morning?
I can get all Jase. Jase is three thirty.
Very good. Three thirty is wondering, okay? Anybody else in the room have anything this morning? Okay? I need to see Sheena after this, just briefly, if I could. I wanna thank Misty and everyone else from WSU for working on this. I know it's a big project, and we sincerely appreciate everything you've been doing. It's been a long meeting, two hours, so I think it's probably time we go to work. Thank you all.